I'll call this board trustees work study. The Calhoun Farming 2012 Board Trustees to Order at 16:00. For the record, members present, I'm Carolyn Abachek, Kim Brady, Marjorie Barnes, Carolyn H. B., my video conference, Cassandra Hatfield. I'm Randy Shackman. We've been notified that any other guys from the hospital are not here. So we do constitute a quorum. We may conduct business on behalf of the district. So we'll move on to our agenda. Next item up on our agenda is audience for guests. And apparently we
We have one that she's not here, so.
We have one, but she's not here. We will proceed to the next item, work study for discussion items. CB 2030 review. I'm going to turn all of this over to Ms. Abachek, who's been working with our governance committee and you all have been doing work on this stuff. So you get to educate us.
Well, no, I don't. And I'm going to turn it right over to Ms. Hatfield, who's going to lead the discussion. But just as a reminder, we've been kind of going through each of the strategic priorities included or that were previously developed by the CB 2030. We're doing a review of those to ensure they look like the correct direction. But we want the board to go in for our priorities that we can then provide to the district for direction for the district from the top down, that those goals would be aligned and simplified as far as from superintendent, well, including board, it has our goals too, board goals, superintendent goals, all the way down to the campus. And so tonight is just our board discussion of strategic priority five. And then we will take your, we being this government subcommittee, will take your comments and summarize, create the indicator and measures for your review. And then they'll go to administration to review. So Ms. Hatfield, you're up.
Okay. Well, to get us started, you have several things at your seat. And so I just wanted to make you aware of what is there. The first thing is a couple of data slides, which we will discuss, a copy of the current CB 2030 strategic priority five document, a copy of the current district improvement plan related to strategic priority five, and then a copy of our scorecard design for strategic priority five. So this strategic priority is optimizing all available resources. And within that currently are some objectives related to personnel, enrollment, financial stability, and quality of facilities. And so on, just another piece of an update, on Friday, we met with the district leadership team, Dr. Eldridge, and Commit was present. And they provided us with a data walk of various data sources related to Dallas County, CFP, and the state, which was very helpful in looking at those connections between how we could measure things and the track that we're on for identifying how we would measure things. And so I brought with me today, or the government subcommittee decided that these two slides, which are some data related to teacher retention, could help us with objective one. This is meant to just be a high level information, reminding ourselves that our role is governance. But it's good to have data that shows us kind of where the state, Dallas County, and CFP is. So this has that in 2022-23 school year, CFPIC experienced a significant increase in teacher turnover. However, it decreased from the prior year, suggesting that we have some stabilization and retention efforts. And the even bigger piece of that is if you look at the graph, you'll see that CFP is the black line, Dallas County is the green line, and Texas is the blue line. And so you can see over the past 10 years how we have trended and how we're making a positive gain post COVID. And then we are also above the state and Dallas County for 2024 on teacher turnover. Not, yeah, we are, let me make sure I say that right. Our teacher turnover rate is at 22.3% according to this dataset, which was from the Taper report. So we thought that was good data for the board to see. And you can see the trajectory over time. And then on the second slide, it also looks at teacher tenure. And those same colors apply of the rate of teacher tenure between Dallas County, Texas, and CFP, which just continues to reiterate as it is across the entire state, the importance of teacher retention strategies. And we thought this was a good dataset for us. Comments, thoughts?
Is there any thought process as to factors that are driving such high turnover numbers? Because even the state numbers, if you're in business and you're turning over 20% of your staff every year, you're kind of shaking your head going, what's our problem? And so I'm just curious, what are you saying and thinking?
I mean, for me personally, I also went to a presentation by, I forgot who it was suddenly, but last month they presented a report, not Holtsworth, but somebody probably know what I'm talking about. And they were talking about teacher pay, teachers, an overwhelming number of teachers looking at leaving the profession, and just some of the challenges that we're hearing state-wide, which would be why, you know, the governor put the task force together in needing to see some real strategic efforts to retain teachers.
Yeah, Charles, but kind of whole book, research booklet together. And, you know, mental wellness is a big one. You know, unprepared, you know, programs, if they, you know, alternatively certified teachers, it's overwhelming. It's pay, benefits, you know, how much they, where they live.
Teachers moving out of the area because they can't afford homes where they work. And so needing to move further out is a factor that I've read about. So just important things to keep in mind.
I think another one is a sense of belonging. So like people that are in the Teach for America program, they go through a cohort model, so they have, you know, support. And I know HR is building all those resources. So they're coming together and, you know, if we meet, they want to know their coworkers and other teachers that teach what they teach so that they can connect. So that's a big one. And so how do we, you know, do that on a district level and then also at campus level where mentorship is valued? And it's not just, I just check in with you because you're, you've been here for so long. Like, what do I really need? So I think all those efforts are, to me, strategies of helping our teachers. I think the other thing that works too is our teacher retention checks that they receive, our years of service. So that's a big one. Just talking to, I think we need to do a better job of advertising all this, like CDA, all the things we have.
Child Development Academy.
People want to know what's in it for me.
I mean, that's a really valid point. We're, not every district has a child development academy like we have, where your employees have daycare for their children to go to.
Starting at six weeks.
Which is convenient, and those are the best teachers. I mean, I love, I mean, it's amazing.
Do we have a very strong program for new teachers or incoming?
I think that needs to be enhanced.
I think that would probably, especially with programs.
I think it needs to be really well planned. That we make time to meet. A lot of times it's just check-ins, but it's really, you know, what are you struggling with? Just watch one thing, classroom management's huge.
Yeah, and I think that, I mean, mentorship and just lessons learned and sharing, all of those things are important. I mean, we see that in our daily jobs as well. All of those things are important. But I think any kind of program like that would have to be created to where it's not adding to a teacher's plate. Yes, something else.
And they get something out of it.
And, yeah, that it's mutually beneficial, I think. Okay.
I do know a couple of first-year, second-year teachers. And I would say that, like Kim said, I would say that the hardest thing for them is just kind of feeling alone in the job and not, you know, just doubting whether they're doing a good job, but also in their group of teachers, you know, trying to find their balance there, trying to find their voice there, being the newest one. And, I mean, yeah. So I definitely think mentorship is maybe a huge component.
Well, and then the encouragement piece. You know, we don't have a lot of teacher development. You know, it's okay that you don't know how to manage your class, let us help you. And that's not something, I think we rely on our principles for that. And sometimes the, there's other things happening. We really need to develop that. Like, you can do it. I mean, simple.
Or just, yeah, feeling like you're the only one that maybe has that problem and, yeah. So with all of this in mind, if we think about objective one, acquire and retain high-quality personnel at all levels, both professional and staff, do we feel like this is measurable?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So what are some ways that we as a board feel like, from a very governance standpoint, that we measure that we are acquiring is retaining high-quality personnel?
This is a good model to start. Thank you all for getting this together. We have talked about retention every year for a number of years. And I don't know if I've ever actually seen numbers, but this data here is where we are.
So teacher turnover rate?
I think you need to break it down by elementary, middle, high school, and also by years of experience. Because we know from zero to five is key. And if that's the majority of what we're getting, then what are we doing to invest in our young teachers so that they stay with us? Because really, teachers are not that, they may be transient, but there's teachers that will drive if they have a good principal and they have a good team. And I think we can save it, well, maybe can't afford my house, but if their work conditions are good and they feel supported, I think we see that over and over again.
There are also some state identified high or areas that are need a high urgency of filling. So that's something to think about.
Because, you know, years of experience, like, what are we doing for the teacher? You know, you've got zero to five, your five to 10 are going to be your veterans. Just, you know, how do we get our veteran teachers to share their expertise where they're feeling valued and they're not just like, I've got two more years? Because, you know, the orchestra teacher at R.L. Turner is phenomenal. And so is the music teacher at Rosemead. And we have some, I mean, not Rosemead, but Rainwater and Rosemead's fifth grade. Like, we have those teachers that are just experts. So how do we get them to creating a system?
Is there a way that we can promote more somehow or involve more in the teacher incentive allotment program, which we obviously have, but the more we could get in that program might be a.
Go ahead.
Because if you take part of that objective, it says, you know, high quality. And so I think we need to define, you know, is that the terminology? But what defines high quality? So is it participation in TIA? And is it the ranking when you get T, the designation? Is it the designator? You know, how are we going to loop in?
Is it certified?
Certified, yeah. Because not all teachers are eligible for TIA. Your specialized teachers aren't. Your PE teachers aren't. And specialized is a high need, right?
Huge high need. What about the bilingual teachers?
We'd have to, so Commit gave us a data slide on that, on like our TIA engagement and the amount that we're drawing down compared to other districts. And we actually looked pretty solid.
Yeah.
So we can get you all that slide so you can see. It was very interesting. I didn't print it. It was like, I tried to pick the ones that were most. So I can print that or have Dr. Eldridge send you guys that slide.
Correct.
But certified teacher?
Yeah, that, but I still think some of the TIA data, you know, whether we compare eligible, tried for it, success, you know, let's figure out what it is, but.
Like, what is highly qualified?
Yeah, or do we tie it back to, you know, an academic measurement from strategic priority one somehow? I mean, that's what we're, that's what we're trying to drive. So do we tie it back somehow to an academic achievement? But that might be tough. I mean, with kids moving, I don't know, you'd have to do it by subject, I guess.
Yeah.
I know. Anyway, I mean, it could be.
So really defining how they're qualified in some way.
Yeah. Which state right now is that not success hours on top of what you already have on your certification or taking that quality?
I don't know. I would think certified would also define high quality.
Yeah, we have a lot of adjuncts that are not certified. So we'd have to break it down by how many are certified and how many are not. And I'm not saying that if you're not certified, you could still be a good teacher. Some people just have that gift. So it gets so subjective in those categories.
But that also goes to like, if you have, if our, if our goal is to have certified teachers, because we know we have some adjuncts that are working towards that certification, how are we supporting them and getting them certified so that they can?
And that could be another, that we have people that are involved with getting a certification, including assistants and not unsertified people. You know, how many people are there actively seeking certification?
Yeah.
Measurable in that might be to evaluate during the year, how many have progressed from adjunct to certified.
Like teacher growth, almost.
Yeah, but that would even include assistants that are getting their certification.
Correct. Assistant to specialized whatever, are working on their certification.
Yeah, that's a really good thought to say, like adjunct to certified. Like, we're supporting those that are almost there. High points are working on it, it's a high point.
Because we have teachers that are also, I know we've partnered with several campuses not campuses, but institutions for teachers getting their masters so that we can keep growing them. And then that's another way that they stay connected.
So that's another way, since like, we're talking about classroom teachers, but this is also personnel at all levels.
Right. But there's another way too, is getting master's degrees. People who are certified, given their either masters or PhD. Mental colleges to find it.
Okay. So dogged, is that a good amount for this to go with on teachers?
Yeah, the other one, lots of it, the acquire part is about the marketing. The marketing.
Recruiting, recruiting.
Recruiting and marketing.
And I think that that has to be, you know, what efforts are we doing to recruit teachers?
I don't know if I like the word acquire. Maybe it's.
It should be recruit and. Recruit and.
I mean, are y'all married?
Recruit and retain.
Recruit, but no, we, I mean, if recruit equals hire. We want to.
Retain.
Hire and retain, right?
Not acquire.
That sounds like we just took, all right, that's done.
I mean, if all are okay with that.
We just hired you. We got all nods here.
Well, and I think that ties back to your, isn't that tied back to your bill that we can get out-of-state, highly qualified?
Out-of-state teachers. Well, because they shouldn't have to, they should be able to get certified teacher pay. If they were already certified, they've already been working in other states. Let's get them in the classroom, let them go there.
Is there anything that we need to also take a look at now for the same kind of thing, but for staff? I don't know, but.
Well, I think, so, I mean, this is all levels, professional and staff. So I think we hit like teachers really well.
How many industry certifications have been earned by our plumbers? I don't know.
Well, like a rehiring our own in the trades.
Yeah, but industry certification, I could do them.
Especially considering the fact that we have specific programs for these industry certifications for student students to go, you know, contribute to the workforce. And if, I mean, we should have the same expectation, I guess, or desire for everyone to continue learning.
Right. Is there, I don't know, is there a way to incentivize covering the cost of certificate tests?
Well, like for our bus drivers under staff, we lost a lot of bus drivers because we have the lowest pay in the area. And so we've got to, we've got to look at special ed and bus drivers. The special ed, some of the hardest jobs that we can't fill, they get no stipends or anything. But our bus drivers are, and I, you know, and I think we're doing a study to see, you know, just to have the numbers, but.
On our, I know we did a study on salary last year.
Three years ago.
Is it, is it industry standard or certain, how often do that?
Well, we're, we're aligning that with, we have that happening right now. Just to bring it current, because we didn't, it didn't address all areas.
Okay.
And we can get all that information whenever it's finished. Do you have, what case even they're going to finish? I have no idea. I know they started about a month ago.
What about reducing open positions? Would that be a way to measure it?
Well, your special ed, you, and bilingual are the two highest needs.
Okay, that was a reasonable.
So you already have.
Yeah. And bilingual. Okay. So any other staff goals?
We could get all that done, that'd be great. But start there, I didn't have to.
I mean, we'll have to trim this, we won't be able to measure all of that.
But we always get more as we go along. I mean, like as the next year progresses, what do we really want to see now? After we've met all those goals?
Okay, anything else on this one? Okay, the next one is increase student enrollment.
Measurable.
Measurable.
I'm going to go with measurable.
Okay. Just a general statement, increase student enrollment or programs?
I think it's some of the things that we've started to see, you know, indicators for us are just district enrollment. And then maybe similar to how we did in strategic priority, what kind of a data breakdown underneath that it's broken out by, you know, transfers in grade. We'll have to figure out, is it, you know, is it enrollment by grade?
Or programs, you know, if you look at how many, you know, I think about, we don't even advertise that. Like, we don't, we don't know when testing dates are. Like, that is a huge thing.
But that was back to our marketing, I mean, about.
You, I think we could break it down by program of choice or.
It wants to define what programs we.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then you could track that to the other goal on certifications.
Oh, industry-based certain.
Like, if they're enrolling for a program, did.
That's personnel.
Yeah.
You're talking about students completing.
Right. I was just like, if they come here and we get them and we're increasing it, did we track that?
Yeah, we have a.
Okay, yeah.
Because that, we consider, that's, I mean, it's kind of a program, but that's also academic success, the long-term success of our students. So that's where we included it in there.
Are we going to have that marketing under this one?
So I think we have marketing under community engagement, and it's internal and external marketing, and it's defined there. So yes, we have it. It's not written here. We could write it here, but we have that, we have that one tagged. Okay.
I think if we're looking at two of our, maybe even three of our, two of our, of the, where we really lose students, it's middle school. And so I wonder if there is some kind of, I don't know if we just include it, if that's just included in there, but I would think that would be something that would be really important to kind of track and build on is, is our, our enrollment transition years from elementary to middle school. And I know that the transition can start as early as third grade is what we're kind of seeing, but definitely that fifth to sixth grade. And then maybe even, I know it's not as, I know that the numbers kind of go up from middle school to high school because we're bringing in transfers again. But I know there's also another dip, kind of 10th grade to 11th grade. That might be another one to kind of look at. So maybe throughout high school. And then I know pre-K is something that we've been talking about as well. So I don't know, that's not really a transition, but to look at that enrollment.
Either here or back over to the other section for district enrollment. I think targeted program publicity. And, you know, a classic example, this music education. We're one of the only districts in the state that has music education all the way through. And that needs to be pushed, you know. I think when, years ago, we lived in California and one of the high schools in our district in parish programs, athletics was their thing. And they consistently won district state titles, you know, because they targeted very specifically. And so however we would choose to target, you know, again, we're about the only programs and leap programs in music education, other things. So what, you know, just say we have openings, but target.
So, and I mean, Kim also talked about that. So I guess my question would be, how are we going to measure that we're promoting it? Is it because we have increased enrollment? Is that an action step that it takes to get this? Or are we expecting a, like, a number on promotion in some way?
Is it action step to, I think, an action step to the thing to get to that.
Yeah, it's an administrative step.
It's a strategy.
To reach, you know. We said, I mean, and I'll go back to the, we said increase attendance. And then a whole campaign and a whole market, not by our doing, but by theirs. And so increase enrollment. I mean, we all have ideas on what we would do for marketing, but that's not ours.
Do we face any about marketing just in general or?
I think it's systematic. I think that we have to get to where everybody understands what our enrollment system is. Because I just go to campuses and, you know, it's not all systematic. And, you know, there may be a campus that says, well, we got to wait 10 days before we give you a confirmation code. And then there's another principle that's just, we just need to get you in the seat. And so we got to work on that. So I think if you just say increase enrollment, I'll get, I'm going to get the system fixed.
All right. Okay. Any others on increased student enrollment?
That's good. I like the old-school way of going about this.
You like the what? You got old school, I mean, I have it to do this very often.
You'll type it out, right?
Yes, I will type it out. The government committee will type it out.
They've got the teacher classes on today.
I do, I mean, I'm ready.
We're working.
Ready? It just feels really good.
Yeah.
Okay, achieve maximum long-term financial stability. Measurable, not measurable.
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 It's measurable.
Just ask the question. That's the question I have to ask.
I'm starting moving forward. Let's start with the balance budget.
Okay. Okay. Clean audit?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, you know, an indicator of the, of financial stability is, is your lowering, is a tax rate.
Staffing formulas, I mean, there has to be, um.
That goes within balanced, I mean, that's, that's what, I mean.
That would be an action that you would take.
That would be with y'all to reach a balanced.
Budget.
We got a lot of strategies under there of that.
Now we're gonna stick attendance rate for enrollment in there?
I think that's pretty much got it.
Yeah, that's pretty much, and I mean, that's.
To your point, we have attendance, we do have that, we got enrollment in a different category, so your, your brain is there.
Yeah.
Check that's included.
I mean, but a little area factor there because we get so much stuff from Austin that.
I know.
Doesn't let us do anything, you know, we're, we're gonna reduce the, you know.
And mandates, financial stability, financial management, I mean, it's.
Yeah.
I, I, I tend to wonder with Randy, cause, you know, when they're compressing, like what measure are we gonna put on the tax rate?
Right.
Cause if.
Yeah, that's true.
That's a, that's a.
It has a lot of external factors.
Yeah. Now it does.
Now it does, yeah.
I guess prior, you know, it.
Yeah.
And really the INS is the only one we really have any kind of control in there.
I think if you leave it at balanced budget and clean audit, under that is many, many things we can.
Are you guys okay with me saying, we, under, tax rate is important, but how are we gonna measurement is subject to some external factors?
Yeah, I agree with you. Yeah, I just rely on your level of precision.
Okay, still important, we still have a goal as a board, but not sure we can make it sustainable goal. Okay, anything else? Last one, optimize the quality of all facilities, which I'm, I've still a little, optimize is the word of strategic priority, so I'm a little struggling with what this means, um, I did look at it.
What did you come up with for a 7-0?
I didn't, because I got stuck with the.
I mean.
Looking at the existing plan, um.
I, um, again, the word quality, optimize the quality, you know, I really think that.
I don't know. It's more on facility management instead of, like, how do you define quality? You picked the wrong paint, but you painted, I mean, you can get into.
I know, this, I think it's a very difficult.
Getting into preventive maintenance and replacements.
Well, and I think this could go back up, it's closely related, whatever, is it two?
That's two.
Where, you know, we're looking, right now as it exists, we're looking, um, you know, to kind of develop the framework of how we monitor these things and how administration monitors these things, so I'm not so sure this by default wouldn't be covered under those.
Cause there's one that's about facilities, number two is about facilities.
Yeah.
So then, the question would be, if we say, okay, optimize all available resources, it's about our staff, about our enrollment, about our financial status, so our facilities go under two, which is where facility, it says facilities and safety and security. So wondering, like, is this, do we need this in two different places?
I think it only gets to be in here.
Is my.
Only in one.
Yeah, if the same, if, if the purpose of all of this is to make it more readable, easier to follow, easier to understand, I would think that we would be lumping things in one category and not pulling them out, if we're wanting to streamline this. Then this is a good instance of, it's in two, it's addressed in two, so take it out of five.
I would confirm.
Either, either, okay. Move to two. Okay, um, now just kind of skipping back over, did we miss anything related to optimizing all available resources that you had written down on your stuff?
Okay, so we are taking out, so in this, the 2030, we're gonna take up the last one, right?
Objective four is moving to objective two, or is moving to strategic priority two. Okay, so the next steps are the government subcommittee will take all of this lovely charting, um, and we will take it and put it into our structure that looks like this, and then we will send it back to y'all. I believe we're targeting sending it back to y'all by the end of the week, because we're meeting later this week.
Yes.
With the hopes of finalizing it by the end of spring break, so that we can schedule meetings with the administration to work right after spring break on five and we're working on the others too.
Let me confirm, um, cause we already have our desired, um, schedule to review the overall thing with the board, right?
Yes, I believe it's the April 10th work study.
Work study.
So we're hoping, we're planning by the April 10th work study to have a draft with no numbers, just the documents, maybe still in portrait form to the board.
Well, he'd know.
Yeah, but later.
I'll get that fixed later.
Yeah.
We'll get that fixed later. So you're gonna send this by the end, that this, what you just updated by the end of the week?
No, not.
To the board.
To the board.
Oh, not to, okay.
Yeah, we, once we send it to the board and I think we'd ask for comments back, um, Sunday.
Okay.
Or if there's any questions, and then y'all, administration, I think we said we would send it March 25th to avoid spring break.
Thank you.
Yeah, we, we didn't want.
After spring break.
Pay attention to spring, March 25th.
We include that in our timeline.
Yeah, okay, perfect.
So we will need to get some meetings on books, this government subcommittee with administration to go over all of them again.
Dee, did you get that? March 25th.
Is the ultimate goal when this is finalized and y'all have such a good job putting it together, is it something that we're going to present at a board meeting and then vote to approve, and then that way it can go to the district improvement committee?
It will go first to DIC for their removal and comment, and that way what is presented to the board in May will include that feedback, that comment, um, from that perspective.
And we're anticipating that we would approve the indicators.
Right.
The numbers, it will take a little bit longer because the baseline data is from this school year, so the actual number goals, it may, it may take through June.
Yeah.
But the indicators.
Indicators and measures is what we would approve, you know, so like the plans and then that way when numbers are in and finalizing the baseline for those requiring, um, the.
Great, and we are still trying to balance that everything will not have a baseline for 24, 25. Some will have a baseline for 24, 25, some will have a request for more information during the 25, 26 school year, with the intent that we could then add a measure after we give them some time to get it going.
Some of it is a presentation to the board on it, and then we will develop the indicator, the measure from that.
So is your committee the committee that also aligns the presentations with the board calendar? Like, will we get together for that, or do you just give this to Brian and I? Cause I feel like if it's presentations, I would love to, or there's things that, that, that's the only way you would know is if we did a presentation, but I also think some of them need to be regular, and so it would be nice to have your input on that.
So I think, um, you know, if we're defining that from the committee as far as here's the presentation, or we think it's a presentation of the first one, um, then we would put together that schedule for everybody to approve, since the board has to approve the calendar, I mean.
Cause you already have kind of the template cast, when we went through and put all the, the work studies and, and, and that way we don't, it's a double check of what we said we were gonna do and when we get the update.
But the intent would be, you know, for a lot of these things is to pull it into, uh, from a calendar and presentation perspective is to figure out the best way to pull it either into our operating procedures or guidance or something to ensure that it's consistent, no matter who, no matter what.
Right, yeah.
And, and to, so it lives through, um, that presentation of what the board wants to see based on our strategic priorities is the same, it's consistent.
Great.
Y'all, I'm excited, I think that you guys have worked so hard and it's nice to see everybody's, without us.
Was there any other discussion for our CB 2030 item 3A? Again, your cloud guys, uh, the next item is 3B, review and discussion of operating procedures.
Um, yeah, so this, um, draft, um, it was distributed, it's, it's pretty, it's pretty, it's 28 pages, so I wasn't gonna, um, waste paper on printing that, but, um, the significant changes in here where we added the, um, subcommittee structure, um, as a big piece, but that was all from the work that we did, whenever that was, in the fall, you know, and the stuff submitted.
September.
It was just included in there, um, we tweaked, you know, some language on a couple of things and y'all could see those edits, um, that's what those edits, um, were. The biggest change in here was related to our, um, our training, travel, expend, you know, everything's associated with our training, because we all know that essentially board member training requirements is essentially an unfunded mandate, right? I mean, the law requires us to have a certain number of hours of training, but they don't pay for it. So, um, the idea, um, just some backup context, last spring when we redid the operating procedures, um, I thought it was worded great, uh, but then in practice, um, when Cassandra was president, um, I, I believe I remember the call, um, she said, you messed this up. So, um, this is not worded the way we wanted, you know, want, wanted to be worded, because it essentially left the approval of training requests only to the board president, and that's not right.
That's too much stress.
Yes, yeah, that's not right, so, um, I acknowledged that I messed it up, so, um, then over the summer, we also got a request about, um, you know, a list of events, but the way that that was worded, it was may attend, may attend, may attend, and if a board member chose to attend all of those, that is not an efficient use of taxpayer dollars. You know, we can't attend every single event that's offered out there.
I mean, the board, the board training in Tahiti is off.
So, uh, what we, you know, we kind of read, in our discussions, we, in the government subcommittee, we, um, wanted to provide flexibility to board members to attend training that was of their interest or specialty. Um, we wanted to minimize the expenses or the bottom line expenses that were paying on it, you know, paying for, um, training. So what we've got now in proposed in the operating procedures is more of a, um, allocation model. And so each board member have an allocated amount for training and travel, you know, if there's trouble associated with the training. Now, there's some requirements, like we have to focus on a required by law training first, I mean, that's the priority, cause, well, y'all don't need to be breaking the law, uh, you know, from that. Um, but then, um, to allow in that allocation, um, amount, um, that you can attend, uh, attend training or professional development or continuing education, that is more, you know, to your interest on the board, specialty, those kind of things, and that that's all within your purview to do in that allocation amount. Does this making sense?
Yeah.
Like.
Well, I know that, well, this is Carolyn and, uh, Eliana, I had met and came up with that policy, so I didn't know how much of that you were taking or not taking.
Well, that was kind of, so from the, the list of the things, we can't have that long of a list the way it's worded, it says may, may, may. So a board member, the way that's written, could essentially attend all, and I think there were like 25 things on there. We can't spend that much money, no matter how much, you know, we.
And we borrowed a lot of that policy from Garland, I assume, so, um, yes, and I agree with you, there was a lot of may, 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 may.
Yeah.
So I'm just, I'm just, I'm just looking at you like, okay.
Well, so what I, we tried to do was fit what y'all were trying with more flexibility and freedom to attend different and additional training.
Yes.
So.
That's enough, you have X amount of money to spend.
You have X amount of money to spend, and what you do with it, as long as you meet your required training requirement, that's up to you.
Okay, so this allocation is above what we're, what we would spend on required training.
Okay, so I have a question though about, like, our team of eight training, um, would everybody just take that?
It's not part of that, it's just in there, it's not part of that allocation, because anything that is team-related, um, or, um, provided from an in-kind situation here at a district facility is not included in that. This is continuing education.
Cause I really thought, you know, the team training to me, like when we went to Holsworth, was, it was not only educating, we built bonds with those, but it was also, we, the car ride, I mean.
So it.
Jim had to go to Buc-Ee's and get the chunk of dough.
It excludes.
But we had a good time.
Always, always.
But we were, it, I mean, I just think the team training is valuable.
This is really around individual, you know, development and individual around your interests. And, you know, there's some responsibility on every board member here to know, you know, you know, what you're gonna do, why, plan ahead, just like you would your budget at home, you know, here's your budget. Now, we do have provisions in there, if there's something over and above or it's a little more extensive, um, that you have, again, have to plan ahead, but you would have to request approval, and that approval to spend that money is by the entire board, not just the board president.
That's good.
So it's by the entire board, but you have to plan ahead, cause that would have to be at a board meeting. And this is only, you know, if you're exceeding the allocation, so. Consent?
I think it sounds, sounds good, we can look at it when the final draft comes together.
You didn't email it us?
You have it, you have it, that's it.
So that's ready, okay.
Yep.
So I think the idea would be to put it in the April board meeting unless they're concerned, so we bring it back for discussion.
Okay. And if we can't address it, you know, from a government's, um, subcommittee, you know, rework, but.
Well, actually, if a board member has questions on it, we would just pause it and bring it back for discussion as well.
Make sure the committee's on board again.
And it does say that the, um, the, the allocation amount should be reviewed annually amongst the board as a part of the budget priorities. So it's set a certain amount right now, but annually, when we review the budget, we would also look at this. If we want to change the overall number, then we would just adj, adjust the board operating procedure accordingly. It would be a part of the annual budget process.
Yeah, in budget discussions and see where we are, what's happening, what we need to say, you know, did it work or not work, that kind of thing. And those were the significance from updates.
So can you send me that email, I, I'd like to just read through it.
Yeah.
I mean, I have the whole thing, but, so I just don't know what you changed.
It's Carolyn. Carolyn's.
Margaret, Sandra, anything to add to that comment, just cause you know, I think you covered it well.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Carolyn? Did you? Did you hear all that? Okay, I can't hear you.
I can hear dogs.
Yes, I did.
Okay, all right, I did note, okay. The board operating, so Tara sent it out, we just need to send back any comments.
Okay, I got it.
Okay. You're welcome.
Great, so board members, any other questions? Apparently none, so we will move on on our agenda. And the next item is closed meeting as authorized under Texas government code, not included, not limited by 510071. We're not doing consultation and attorney or assessments personnel related. And so we will move into closed session. Any questions? So I will wrap my gab on and allow those not included on the board to exit the room.
Are you staying in here? I think you're going.
In Oakland session after our closed session at the work study.
Seven thirty, right?
Yeah, seven thirty, so. Board members, is there anything we wish to discuss relative to the closed session?
An open session.
Now.
As or our closed session.
I believe we have reached the end of our agenda. It wasn't the end of our adjournment. And so we are adjourned at seven thirty fifty five. All right? Thank you.